So with that, let's go ahead and call this city council meeting. It is exactly six o'clock. For the, if you would mind providing the invocation.
Well, we come tonight with humble hearts and bow here. We come thanking you for all that you've done. We know, Lord, there are all the things that's going on in this world. We know that only you can bring salvation and peace in our hearts. You can always change the mind, not only our mind, but our heart. We thank you, Lord, for all that you've done. We pray that you open us up to understanding and wisdom and listening ears. We thank you once again. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. We'll begin with United States flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the states and to the republics.
For which it stands.
One nation, with God and the visible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice. Honors the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Secretary Hensley has informed us there is no, there are no comments for the visitors and citizens forum this evening. So we'll move right along.
Sarah, can I just interrupt? I believe is the scout here? I see a Melcher on the list of commentators.
Yes, I am here.
Great. And it's Matthew Melcher?
Yes, ma'am.
Matthew, would you like to tell us what you're doing here with us this evening? Glad to have you.
So for two of my merit badges, citizenship in the community and communications, I have to attend a meeting, a city council meeting. So that's why I'm here.
Wonderful. All right. Great. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
Um, uh, I guess not. I don't really have anything to say.
Who you go to? What's that?
Uh, I go to Lake Creek High School.
Great. All right. Wonderful. Well, welcome. A little bit different forum than typically a city council meeting, but we are, we're moving the city right along. So with that, we will begin with the first item of business on your agenda, which is the consent agenda. Item number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the public hearing and regular telephone video conference meeting held on June 9th, 2020. Number two, consideration of possible action regarding accepting the heritage place parking covenants as submitted by Chris Cheetum. Counsel, you can take these individually or together. What is your pleasure?
I just had a spelling issue that I just emailed to Susan. It doesn't change at all the content or substance of the minutes.
And that change has been made.
If there's no comments, then I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Or say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Next item of business on the agenda, consideration of possible action. Number three, consideration of possible action on departmental reports. As again, I think we'll have Richard Tran read through everyone's departmental report, and we can comment as needed.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'll summarize some of the highlights of all of these, and then if you have questions, feel free to come back to me or the department head, they may be on. In May, we saw City Hall begin to move towards normalcy. In our case, in many ways, I knew normal. All departments began to open up and were operating. We pretty much always operated with, with full hours and full departments, but we began to come back to allowing public in. We are still through the end of May, in fact, continuing into June, still seeing less public coming into City Hall in person. A lot of people, whether, regardless of their motive for doing so, they're utilizing email, the, the online payment ability or for the utility billing, or telephone to communicate with City Hall in ways that sometimes you used to come in person to do so. But we're still able to communicate with the public to get those items done. We continue at least once weekly to release updates to the city. We're posting them outside on the city building and on the city's Facebook page, you know, general items related to certain ongoing items with the city, and especially keeping people up to date with regards to the COVID-19 situation, so that they at least know that they can count on us for some of that information. The Montgomery Music and Mudbugs Festival was formally reset for March 27th of 2021. It's really just getting too late in the year for that event, and there's still been some uncertainty. And so Charlie Diggs, the promoter, went ahead and just planned to reset that for next March. Freedom Fest is still planned for July 4th, and the Chamber will be taking extra precautions for the COVID-19 situation that are consistent with hosting a public event outdoors. And so we're looking forward to that event going off. As I believe everyone knows, you know, the sip and stroll is already resumed activity. And so there, you know, there is life in Montgomery, and there's reasons for people to be out and about. I do specifically want to make mention, July 8th, we'll have a virtual town hall presentation of the comprehensive plan, and that is primarily to get public input, so we can move that along. Touching on the home grant, you know, we've had a couple of the dates extended on that, but I'm told the construction for that is preparing to move forward. You know, we, a couple of the homeowners, three of them specifically, have been given a move-out date at the end of June. And so we're just waiting for confirmation at this point on when activities for construction should begin, but that should be pretty close to imminent. For the fourth one, we're just waiting on some documentation to sign that I've been told for the last two weeks should be any day. And so we're continuing to check on that. But what we've been told is the plan is for all four of those should be constructed on a similar timeline. So we'll continue to press for information on that as we move forward. And July 14th, well, that is also, would normally be our first city council meeting for July. At this point, I don't see any change that'll have us doing that an in-person meeting versus a Zoom meeting. I do intend, I believe that's definitely still being Zoom at the time, which means we probably, we wouldn't have to change our city council meeting, because that's also the date of the primary election for which City Hall is committed as a primary location. So we, I don't see a need for us to change that meeting, since city council will be able to participate from their own site via Zoom, and staff can still be in their offices for that. So, but I did want to make sure everyone was updated that, of that date for the primary election and that City Hall is a polling location. And I will be out of the office through July 3rd for some personal time. I will be available, and I will be local if staff needs me or council needs me. You don't hesitate to reach me either by email or my cell phone. Moving on to some of the highlights of the departmental reports. For Public Works, I want to point out that during the month, they completed the parking expansion at Cedar Brick Park, also installed new parking bollards there, of the wooden type with the ropes connecting them. And also, the, I guess we can call them the pilot of the Texas flag car stops were put out. We now have five of those and are looking forward over the next month or so, getting another five out there in the city. I think they've definitely been a hit for several posts on Facebook. There's, you know, subject of one walking contest with people in the city finding a walking route to connect those. And, and I'm thinking that might be a couple of the cities who want to borrow that concept and import to their area, and hopefully they don't forget where they found that being here in the city of Montgomery. In the, with the police department, I want to make sure everyone's aware, we, Department Test sent a letter to TechStock requesting that a future traffic signal light be studied and looked at being placed at 105 in Buffalo Springs. That'll help slow down the traffic through there, but it's especially going to become meaty with the continuing commercial construction. We have the shopping center where Kroger is the anchor store. We now have Chick-fil-A across the road from there, Starbucks and other shopping well under construction. There's going to be a lot more traffic coming through there, and that'll be needed for traffic control. The police department also had to cancel their training during the month of May due to COVID-19, and that'll look at being rescheduled going forward.
Although, given the, sorry, Richard, given the structure of where everything comes out on Buffalo Springs Drive, unless they go ahead and, or somehow we convince them to go ahead and drive or put a road through, that won't help the Chick-fil-A traffic or the Starbucks traffic for some time.
Yeah, I, I do think other methods, you know, may become necessary, especially right there. You have that crossing point where Kroger and Chick-fil-A are. It's also an effort essentially to bring this to their attention sooner rather than later, and to get that on their traffic, on their radar. It's something the chief and I had driven through and discussed before Chick-fil-A had even opened.
And if I may jump in here for a minute?
Yeah, go ahead, chief.
Yes. Councilwoman, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I've talked to TechStocks about that as well. But right now, what we're trying to do is eliminate the amount of accidents that we're having there. We did a study before we sent the letter to TechStock. And we've had, we've had some accidents there. We went all the way back to about 2018, and just in that particular area, since, since Kroger's has been there, we've had quite a few accidents. So what we looked at, both the engineer and myself from TechStock, we looked at the, where we're having the traffic light installed, that will just help slow some of this traffic down with those people coming out until, at some point, one of the developers will help build a road coming through there. I know exactly what you're saying, though. But we're doing that right now for precautions, just for accidents.
Right. And I suppose there might be incentive for the shopping centers to open once a light is there, because it might make it more attractive for tenants to have access to a protected left.
Yes, absolutely.
I think the people of Buffalo Springs would probably like the light that way they could get out a lot easier. It's very hard to get out at the location. And the traffic does go fairly slow from Kroger's all the way down to the intersection, because it takes you sometime five minutes to get out.
Yes. Yes.
The light we're getting, though, is, is, will it be a light to, will it be one of the smarter lights that we have around the city?
What we're having to do is we're having TechStocks to look at all of our lights. I don't know when the last time they were, they were updated. When, I know we had talked about the, the school aspect of, of the traffic there, and I looked at that when I first got here. But I understand when Lake Creek opened up, the first year it opened up, only, it took care of about, maybe about 20 or 30% of that traffic. But then the year after that, the seniors all went to Lake Creek as well, which took about 50% of that traffic away. This year, we didn't have the traffic problems we had with, with all the buses lining up and all the traffic there. We took a look at it, and we actually got more help from the school officers. We got help from them back by their campus at the high school, and we kind of managed everything that was up front from at 105 and 149. So that traffic there went down considerably. Once Lake Creek opened up, in the following year, the seniors went there. So, yeah, we're having TechStock, and that's one of the things we've been looking at is both the speed and all the red lights on, on, on 105, because in some spots, it's, it's longer with no red lights, and then when you start to get the lone star. And so we were looking at TechStock, and I were looking at how close those lights are together as well. We don't want them just stacked up on top of each other as well. And, and the re-timing of those lights could, they could probably all use some re-timing.
Or better yet, have them controllable from City Hall and on cameras, so that you can have somebody who has, rather than have to go in person to manage one light, could manage a series of lights if there's an incident to help route traffic through the city, if we need to reroute, or for certain times of day, need to reprogram them.
Yeah, because we really, the time the traffic really got congested was, was around 3:00 PM, and that was at, that was at school traffic. And I understand this agreement that they had gone into, I don't think they ever actually did anything on it as far as rewriting the buses, because I think that they thought once that Lake Creek was up, that would take care of all their issues. And it did. It took care, it took care of some of the issues, but there, there's always things to look at when we're talking about traffic, and we're talking about development going on. And, and so it's something we have to look at. With 105 being one of the, being the main street here, we need to always be taking a look at that. And we need feedback. We're, we're putting on our, on our website, so we can get feedback from, from the public as well, not only just for the traffic on 105, but traffic and any issues within the entire area. So you'll be seeing that on our Facebook and on our website.
Yeah, the key issue with the school is having the bus more located in the center of our town.
Right.
Come back twice a day. And as a group, we'll have more and more buses.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, because this school district with the subdivisions coming up, it won't stop growing. I, I asked for a meeting with the school right before the pandemic happened, because we had gone in to do, to do some active shooter there. And during the course of our active shooter, we found out that there's no, that the reception inside of those buildings, we can't get out. If you've got a police officer inside that building on an active shooter, they can't communicate with someone outside, and they can't communicate with the guy down the hall. The school should have had those things set up to where we could all communicate, and you can't communicate. It's not just agency to agency, but it's, it's, it's this agency with this agency. So we, we were setting up a meeting with them for that, and to talk about the other issues with any traffic issues that may be coming up in the future. But they've, they've not been back to work since, collectively, since the pandemic. So we still plan on having that meeting with them to, to see if we can hammer out some things.
I have one more for you, chief, before you disappear here.
Yes.
The issue was handling parking on the sidewalk throughout the city. I know we have ordinance on that, and years back, maybe two police chiefs ago, whatever, we, they were enforcing that pretty heavily, but it seems like at times, you know, I walk around the city a lot, I see a lot of bips parked on the sidewalk. And I'm not talking about a tire, you know, tire just on a couple of inches. I'm talking about on it where the person on the sidewalk has to get out into the road and go around, especially our children.
Okay.
Walking or either on bicycles on the sidewalk have to get out in home's way.
Okay. Are you, are you saying that in the subdivisions, or?
Well, all throughout the city, not just Buffalo.
Okay. Okay.
It needs to be included in there also.
Okay. We will, that will be, that will be something we'll address with that traffic issue, and I'll have, I have our sergeant who, who takes care of those traffic issues and takes those requests. But when I looked at our city ordinance, we, it's, it's real vague about the sidewalk, but that's something we will be enforcing anyway, because out of Transportation Code 545, it's one of the, it's one of the laws in there that we should be enforcing anyway. So we'll, we'll start taking a look at that. You know, a lot of times, what we get is also through people letting us know. So we'll, we'll put that on our website as one of those issues. And if you see that, please call us, because that, that, what it does, it does cause people to leave the sidewalk area and go into the roadway, which makes it more dangerous for them. So yes, but yes, we'll enforce it. Our city ordinance could also kind of stand an update on that. But like I said, Traffic Code 545 also addresses that as well.
Thank you.
All right, chief, before you get away, chief, do you have any update on the missing person?
On the missing person, this morning in our, in our meeting, we talked with the investigator. We've, he's still checking with the family. We got a possible sighting, we're getting calls of possible sightings. Every time we get one of those calls, the detective or one of our, one of our patrolmen will make that location. Our last sighting was in the city of Houston. We know that he has an aunt today talking to the investigator. We're trying to find out her address, because she just moved. One of the times that he left, he went to her house, and it was weeks before she actually informed his mom that, that he was at her house. So we're, we're, we're diligently working on it every day with different leads. We also, we also pulled in Harris County. Harris County has a, has a, what they call a homeless, homeless network. And what they do is they go down and they look at the homeless people. They've connected us with Houston PD as well. So throughout those homeless camps down there as well, we've got his name there. So if he comes up there, then we'll, then we'll know. So we've reached out, and we're, we're reaching out all the time. We hadn't stopped. So that's kind of where we are now, is we'll be, we'll be looking for that answer, address, or new address, and try and make a run to her house, because she told his uncle that he was not there. But just to be sure, we're going to make a run out to her house.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, just to follow up on the sidewalk, Richard, can you put that on the list of things? It doesn't seem like it should be too onerous to make sure that our code is in line with state code.
Okay.
Definitely. And I'll work with the chief if he needs any help from, from my end as well for that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, chief.
Especially during the summer, it seems like safety and keeping kids on sidewalks should be a priority.
Right.
Where, where you have them, obviously, on my side of town, there's not a huge number of sidewalks, but I know Public Works has been clearing, finding sidewalks on 105, and probably there aren't a lot of people parked on 105, but in other places, you know, on the way to, like, Cedar Brick Park from downtown and other neighborhoods where there are sidewalks, let's keep the kids on the sidewalks.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Picking back up with the court, court restarted June 11th with pre-trial and show cause hearing dockets. Masks and social distancing were mandated per the OCA, you know. Also, those coming in completed COVID-19 questionnaires, and all went well with, with reopening the court. So look forward to that becoming more regular and normal again as part of our, everything opening back up. With the utility report, there were a couple items I wanted to draw your attention to. One item, the unanticipated income line, $9,900, you know, rather large item there. $6,000 of that was S-Pro fees, a little over 14, oh, with, sorry, $2,367.81 cents for franchise fees. You know, that's over $8,300, definitely the bulk of the money there. The balance of that was $45 in vendor and golf cart permits, $96.54 in right-of-way fees. There was $55 in furland donation, a $30 reimbursement to the city, you know, a $30 fee for unlocking a water meter, and $1,297 for a culvert on Baja. So I wanted to give you more detail with that as a large number. Additionally, on the flag line, flags are listed as $5 each with a $24 total. In addition to $5 each, if somebody buys a set of One American One Texas flag, those are sold as $9. So those were one set of the two, and then three Texas flags at $15. So that's where the $24 comes from. So wanted to draw, just draw a bit of attention on that item there. And I believe then that brings us to the bookkeeper report. So before I jump to there, did anyone have any additional questions on those reports?
I do. Sorry, I have one more question. So when are we going to see the arrears dropping off for at least the 200-day, or the 120-day arrears?
That'll, that'll be with next month. I'm working with staff this week on that, and so that is getting ready to get put into place. What I was waiting for on there was for the audit to be completed and closed, and then we're taking care of that with the closing business this month.
And then how are we doing with arrears generally, given the economic situation?
We're actually doing better than I would have anticipated. We had, I think, I forget the exact number now, but I remember discussing it with Haley in the office, a slightly below average number for, for accounts that were disconnected for non-payment. We have put, we have put a number of people on payment plans, and I'm not aware of any that have been brought my attention that are not adhering to the payment plans. And so I think we're, I actually think we're in a better situation than I would have guessed we would have been two months ago.
Okay.
Sorry, are payment plan in the arrears, or is that, is that included, so we can assume that some of the 17 are on a payment plan?
Well, if you're, if you're talking about the arrears when you get in the 60-day category, then that would be yes, but not at, you know, very little of it, if any, will be in the longest extended category there.
Okay.
Unless they've been on a payment plan for a certain period of time, certainly none of the COVID-related ones. One thing I do want to mention about the payment plans, one thing that Haley learned recently in taking the training on software was how to input the payment plan information to work within the billing program. And so the amount of the, of the payment plan will input automatically to the billing that goes out, so that's no longer a manual calculation and an additional communication, you know, your bill plus X amount of dollars, you know, as someone needing to do the hands-on work on both ends of that from the office, it's, once it's input, it automatically comes out on their bill.
That's great.
What you're saying, Richard, is once they get put in, a account gets put in a payment plan, I think their, the account, arrears goes away, because it's, it's a different category, like an 800 category, so it won't show up under the regular arrears number, right?
I believe you're correct there, and I probably just was rather clunky on how I explained that part of it. But, but the, I don't believe it shows up anymore. I think you're correct on that. As long as they maintain compliance with that payment.
Oh, I like the plan, definitely. Better than what we had before.
Richard, I've got a question, and just jumping ahead just a little bit, but utility, what's up at Memory Park, 105,000 gallons?
With regards to that, that, you know, I know, you know, we've had a good bit of rain recently, but we've also had several dry periods. And so I think that's just reflective of the irrigation out there, you know, as far as I'm aware, and from discussion with Mike, unless there's something that's come up. I was going to say more recently, but obviously we're talking about the month of May here, so it's not recently.
Yeah, April was 12,000, May was 105,000. I would just, that's 93,000 difference.
It, it's really just the weather factor there. While we've had periods of on-off rain, we had, we probably had about, I think, about three solid weeks of almost no rain, and some, and some hot weather there, too, so.
And that's actually not all that unusual, given previous years, even, you know, we had months where there was too much water being used, but previous years in summers where they were doing a good job of managing the water, we had more usage. So that's not an unusual number. 120 to 150 would not shock me in July or August, unfortunately, depending on what the rain cycle was.
Yeah. I know with the rain, with the rains that we've just had, they'll probably go a little while without having to be watered again, but any, in order to maintain that park with all the plantings that are there through a significant dry period is, I mean, unfortunately, it's going to take a lot of water.
Okay.
And also, let me remind council, because council, a lot of council is new, that, you know, we have consistently approved, specifically approved expansions to the system in plantings and actually building out space to put more plantings on, and each one of those is a new zone that requires new water. So, you know, even year-on-year comparisons, if you could get the weather right, or sorry, not the weather, well, yeah, the weather, weather to be comparable, the park is getting bigger, so the water usage gets higher to support that size. I mean, that's been a political decision that results in water usage. Unfortunately.
And you're right, that's a political decision, but it's also one I think a lot of the residents of the city appreciate, by the way, I see use of that park.
Yeah.
That has been the trade-off in terms of, you know, it's a beautiful jewel for the city that lots of people appreciate, and it gives us something to be proud of and to show, you know, people in Montgomery County and beyond, a beautiful part of Montgomery.
I think Mike and his crew are doing a good job on the irrigation. I did notice in his notes that they cut back on the irrigation going to City Hall, which, you know, they can show on 27,000, which is quite a bit for that, the size of the system over there, but I think he said he cut it back. But I think he said he cut it back down. I think they're pretty good stewards of the irrigation around town.
Okay, and before I go on, Tom, did that answer your question well enough?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Richard.
Okay, just want to make sure before that we got the point you needed before we move on. Were there any other questions? Okay, I believe Michael Williams with his report is the next item on the agenda.
Hello, everyone. We have your May operations report. If we go down to page three, we have our district alerts. We had a, some high level alarms, a non-podable leak at the sewer plant. And West Station 14 had a number of high level alarms where we had to go and pull and clean the pumps. And then some no power issues due to some storms. Page four is your wastewater flow detail for the month of April. We had, month of May, we had 4.597 million gallons. Daily peak was April 29th, 290,000 gallons, and your average daily flow is 153,200 gallons. Page five, we have your effluent monitoring report. All samples in May were within compliance, and we recorded a total of 4.75 inches of rain. Below that's your rain gauge that's located at the sewer plant. Page six is your water report. We sourced a total of 9.146 million gallons, flush total 222,000, and sold a total of 8.599 million, bringing us to a nice 96% accountability. And then on the bottom right, we have your connection count. Page seven is your groundwater production chart. Page eight is your water accountability chart. And then page nine is your water sold versus water treated with a 13 month history. We had a total of 53% return back to the sewer plant with 4.75 inches of rain this month.
What does that return percent telling anybody here?
Well, that return percent is telling you what was sold through the meters compared to what was recorded at the sewer plant for flow.
Michael, please do not give us a definition of something you know he knows the answer to. Give him an interpretation of it, come on.
I appreciate you asking for me, Randy, that's nice.
Well.
Use this number, Michael, this confuses everybody.
I was going to say, it's one of those things I'm rolling my eyes because you know I can't even look at that without getting my blood pressure up.
Yeah, water, the irrigation change every month and the rainfall change every month. Those two unknowns every month, so that number is kind of useless in my book.
Okay, it's just reporting data that that's out there, I mean.
But the whole point of the return number is that you're assuming that it is, it has to be accurate if your flow numbers are accurate. And if your flow numbers are accurate, then it means that your usage of your wastewater treatment plant number is accurate. If your flow number is BS, then you don't know what your capacity utilization number is, which means that the whole CapEx number or trigger of when you should be doing more CapEx is completely up in the air. So there actually is an important reason that we care about it. So the fact that it's all over the place or seems to have this mystical relationship with, I don't know what, it actually does matter. It's not just a number that's out there that we can look at or not look at, no matter what we want. I mean, it actually, it's measuring some, it should be measuring something important, and there is a reason that we care about it. When do we build a new sewage treatment plant? That's supposed to be telling us something because it measures how much crap is in the sewage treatment plant.
Well, yes, but those numbers change drastically every month, your rainfall and your usage irrigation. There's a bunch of different factors playing into it. I know we've gone year after year where you don't believe the flow numbers, but we have that calibrated twice a year. And during the calibrations, everything comes out correct. They make minor verify the flow is correct. So, I mean, I don't understand why these numbers you don't, you don't believe.
Because they're not correlated to anything about pumping, they're not correlated to the amount of INI. They're not, you know, that's the problem, they just defy logic.
All logic does defy.
Correlation to reality.
Well, you can't say we had half an inch of rain, so therefore we should have 50,000 gallons of infiltration at the plant.
Why not?
Because that's just not real logic. That, because like I told you before, we have different intensities of rain. Rain in different areas that have worse infiltration. I mean, there's multiple factors that play into it.
Right, but we're not Houston where you're getting gigantic differences over, you know, a 70 square mile area. This is a three square mile area and our sewage treatment plant, our wastewater treatment collection area is much smaller than that. So, you know, and Randy has done some of those things, too, to try and figure out, you know, how much INI we should be getting. So, you know, we've got a reasonable grasp on how insane the numbers are.
Okay, well, I mean, just for what you said, I mean, we have a new system that we're working on, very tight system, and we just had a rainfall, we pulled 70,000 gallons of infiltration out of the sewer system. I mean, you know, from, from the get go, the sewer system's never going to be watertight.
Right, that's fine.
And I mean, just try to do a correlation. I mean, it depends on what areas get hit harder. I mean, month to month, it's different.
I get that, too. But I don't know what a really tight system is. Are you saying that, but you're talking about somewhere else from here, right? You're just talking about it's physically constructed so that water doesn't get in or that you somehow captured it before it went in?
Yeah, so we.
Right, so we're not talking about Montgomery in this example, right?
No, we're not.
Okay.
I don't know if it makes you feel any better, Rebecca, but Park was doing all the numbers as far as water sold, based on water sold, doing a material balance around the sewer plant to the last year and a half, figuring out the ANA and every month, and also the irrigation total. And the sewer flow looks fairly close of what, you know, the raw versus the calculated, that's pretty close.
Okay, it's just when I look at the numbers, you know, linearly going up and down regardless of what's happening to the rainfall total, I get suspicious.
Yeah, and then also you have, most of your water is pretty set, the schools are shut down also. Since they've been shut down, that's a lot less sewer flow from the schools. And then like last month, you have less rainfall also. But I think the ANA for last month or this period was 610,000 gallons of ANA. But all that's calculated and also the irrigation calculated. But I guess my beef is the return number is not really, you know, if somebody has heartburn on that number there, it's all of one, you just ignore that number. The sewer creep, treatment water flow looks pretty accurate if you look at the calculated flow also.
But then if you're, if you're calculating that properly, is that not the return number?
No, the return is about 88%.
Your return number is not calculated from flow?
Yeah, it's calculated on what's sold. And you subtract the irrigation flow.
Okay.
You subtract the ANA.
All right.
On our presentation, I guess, early in 2019, we showed you how we did the ANA.
Oh, right, how you guys do it, I'm talking about how Gulf does it.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, Randy presents a completely different data set, so our numbers are going to be dramatically off.
Are you talking about the percent? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're just, we're just taking what the city sends us that was sold and then what we recorded at the sewer plant. So.
Yeah, that percentage, the percentage of what the sewer plant flow was versus the water sold minus the ANA.
I have a question, so to your point, Rebecca, what's the impact? Why do we, why is this a big deal? What's, what are we looking for here?
Well, so there are a couple of different things. One really important one is when do we build a new sewage treatment plant? And in theory, you know, if you're doing something small, it doesn't really matter when you do it. But for a sewage treatment plant, it'll probably cost $7 to $12 million roughly. So you want to put it off as long as possible. But the state requires that we do it based on what our usage of our current sewage treatment capacity is. And we have to start building at 75, or we have to start planning at 75% and building at another percent, which means that it starts getting expensive really quickly. So if we make a mistake in our numbers, we have to start paying early. And we also need to put it online when we have one flush. But obviously, like, think of a school, if you build a new school and you only put one student in it, that's really expensive. What do schools do? They usually build like eight trailers in the back and they put new classrooms in, and then they build a school and they've got it like 60% full. You can't really do that very easily with sewage treatment plants. So again, knowing for sure what your data is means that A, you're not building it too early, and B, when you do build it, you really need it so that your costs are as low as possible.
And everybody, it's based on what the actual flows are at the plant. But what Becky's point is, is that if we can tell, okay, how much of the actual flow at the plant is stuff that we don't have to, where can we find ways to reduce that actual flow at the plant to prolong this project or prolong the need for this out? So if, you know, because Randy calculates the INI number in his comparison, and that kind of gives a better tell of, okay, this is how much extra is being treated at the plant. We know we're not going to get that to zero, but how much do you invest in bringing that number as low as possible versus expanding the plant? And it's a trade off of getting, you know, minimizing the amount of flow per connection to the system and then maximizing the amount of time until you have to.
Right, so there's actually two things going on. So Chris was talking about rainwater, which is perfectly clean, and it should be able to, you know, go down into the river just as is, as opposed to going through the sewage treatment plant. We have to cut off those access points. But I'm also talking about if our own internal calculations or the meters are wrong, then, you know, we could be, we could be doubling our estimates of what's really happening or even, you know, 10% too much when you're talking about, you know, millions of gallons. So there's two different things that we're talking about, both of which are bad or good, depending on which way the meter's going.
Or potentially not enough, I mean, to your point.
Well, that could be bad as well, because if you think you've got, you know, 60% capacity and then all of a sudden somebody knocks the meter and you're at like 90% capacity, you should be building like right then, and you haven't even done any planning. And I'm not sure what the regulatory response would be to that. They'd be mad.
And so it's three consecutive months. So you have to have, the rule is that three consecutive months of 75% of your capacity, your capacity is 400,000 gallons a day, you have to initiate engineering and financial planning. And then at 90, three consecutive months of 90%, you have to initiate approvals for construction. Okay.
But if we had, if we had something wrong with our meters and we were all of a sudden at 90 and we hadn't even done any planning, I'm not sure how they feel about that. And at the very least, that would show that we were entirely incapable of running the city.
And we have those meters checked twice a year, so we're very confident they're accurate.
So what would be an alternative? Is there another software? Or is there another, is there companies that do it a different way? I mean, what are, what would be the end goal here of?
I mean, you always bring a second meter out and have it calibrated to record against each other. But it's really, that's just going to be a waste of money because you can have people verify the accuracy based on the flow that's being put out at that given time compared to your flow meter. And we have that done twice a year, and they verify it every time. Randy runs his numbers, and he's verifying that the the flow seems accurate, too. So within a couple of percentage of error, we're accurately recording what's going into that plant and leaving.
And last year, the guy that did it suggested like putting the meter in shade because the temperature does really affect it, because they recalibrate it once in the summer and once in the winter, I think. And, you know, they talked about a couple of other things. It's not, you know, it's just hard because the sewage doesn't behave like, you know, it's not a, it's just not, you know, like water, which, you know, flows nicely and gently and at high pressure or good pressure. You know, it's just, it is what it is.
So bottom line here is we do or do not have a concern with the number.
I always, I always have a concern.
Sure.
So I think the answer is that, you know, this is the biggest investment the city will make when we build our next sewage treatment plant. And so you need to look at it every month and see if it makes sense. And when it doesn't, talk about it or talk about it even when it doesn't, it does make sense because this is, this is no joke. It's a lot of money. So your water costs like 550 per thousand gallons, your sewer costs like 1250 per thousand gallons. So that's your magnitude of, of order. And if you, for smaller investments, it actually costs closer to like 18 bucks. So it's a, it's a, you shouldn't take your eye off this at all. And you can't just like throw one up. It's not like buying a car, you know, when your, when your old one breaks down. I mean, you don't, they have like, I don't know, portable ones, sewage treatment plants, but they're, they're expensive and not that efficient.
Okay.
All right, let's move right along. Thank you.
Okay.
Still presenting, Michael, or are you?
No, I'm done unless you'll have any other questions.
Thank you. All right, the next is the financial report by Anthony Lasky.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just going through some of the financials for the month of May. For your operating fund on your account balances, you have a little over four months of reserve currently in there. And that's as of, I checked earlier today, and it's checking account balance a little bit lower than what it is, but it's still roughly over, just over four months. On your MEDC, you're about a little over two years reserve. And then in your utility fund, you have about 10.5 months reserve in there. Techpool is a little bit lower. We have it at, I checked, it's about 2.21%. We're still monitoring those rates as we, as of today, and still keeping an eye. Hopefully, it won't go below that 0.1%. It's been kind of off and on around that 0.21, 0.22% rate. So it's been kind of fluctuating there, but still we'll keep an eye out on it. For the budget, we did receive in May your sales tax of 315,000. The bulk of it, 236,250 was for the general fund and then the other quarter of it in the MEDC fund. Richard and the rest of the department heads were still working on the budget as, as far as doing all the amendments and everything. So we are keeping it, we are keeping on top of that. As far as the other budgets, I know there were a few updates on the MEDC side, and I've gone ahead and updated those as of, as of current. I think there were three new accounts, if I remember right. So I've gone ahead and updated that. I believe that's on page 31 of the report. And I went ahead and divided the 1,000 amounts just evenly by 250, starting it next month. And then the one, and then the 200 is just a one time thing. And then I know there's a couple of quarterly transfers that are coming up, and I plan on getting those done the beginning of next, next week, so those will be taken care of.
Good.
And then the only thing that I have is I just wanted, I just wanted to see Mr. Cronin if he got my email yesterday regarding this week in checks.
Tom, he's asking you a question.
I'm sorry?
If you got my email from yesterday regarding. If you got my email from yesterday regarding um check signing?
Oh, no, I did not, but I'll, I'll check it. I only check it uh in the morning.
Okay, no worries.
I, I'll be available tomorrow if, if that's okay.
Um, okay. Would you be available either Thursday or Friday?
That's fine.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because I knew Richard and the mayor were not going to be available. So I wanted to make sure you were uh available that time.
Okay.
I plan on having them done by tomorrow afternoon. So if tomorrow or by Thursday morning, Thursday afternoon works for you, um, we can coordinate, we can get it done.
I'm real flexible, Anthony.
Okay, perfect. I appreciate your help.
Certainly.
I had a question, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the sales, on the sales tax, like uh on the general fund under taxes and franchise fees, uh, over budget amount or, or that amount October to May, that includes uh, the sales tax that the state showed for two months because we had extra funds from prior. How did all that, how's all that playing out as far as our, our records? Because I know when I, we got this sales tax report from the state, uh, Richard and Susan, it had blanks, or very little money for those two months. So they didn't include those, that extra money that they subtracted, so to speak, from us. You know what I'm saying? I guess how do we show that on all these reports?
We've gone ahead. Now, we collected it back in September of last year. And so we just basically care, you know, put it in a separate kind of holding account until they, until um they were to be paid back. And so we just distributed it from that to the respective March and April amounts that we would have received.
Right.
So since it was last year, did we then accrue it for this year? Or because they do those adjustments at the end of the year. Um, did we do that internally? Because, or did we? I mean, you know, from a cash basis, obviously, um, we wouldn't have done it, but.
We always showed it in the balance and just knew that that was the extra four hundred K that was sitting there. And we did know, we did, and we had no idea when they were going to take it back. So we just kept it.
Yeah. I didn't realize it was in the, I didn't remember it was in the prior fiscal year.
Yes, yeah. And so we weren't sure when they were going to come calling for it. And so held on to it, made a little bit of interest on it. And then when they came calling, we had it to be able to return back.
Right. I understand all that. I guess my question is, uh, if you look at all these reports, all these people who are doing for us, including the one to two we just got recently from May and June, or from the S S R I report, a long report, but two months, no revenue from the state, which we, they just back, took it back. That we had. So that screws all those numbers up as far as data collected and, and percent and all this other stuff. All that data is garbled.
No. No, because they no, the state data would include, like, we'll just count Kroger, because Kroger still paid the state what they owed us for uh met uh March, which is what this month counts for. It's just that Kro, uh, the state took the Kroger money basically and kept it all for themselves. But Kroger still paid it. So they still counted it as Kroger payment.
Right.
But, but going back to the question for Anthony, did we, are we counting that, that accrual, basically the accrual from last year in this year's revenues already?
Yes.
Okay.
That was, that was done um back from, I believe it was in November. Yeah. Because it would have cut off, because November's would have been for last year's. But yes, there wasn't accrual.
Okay, okay. But yeah, Randy, I think that all the sales tax data is fine. It's just, it was an internal question, but all, I think all of the state data is fine. It's just a question of what they did with the cash. And they gave it to us and they took back.
Yeah, I understand it, dollar for dollar, but it just messed up a lot of the numbers in that S R I report.
But all the individual reporters are okay.
Uh, I don't know if I'd agree with that. Yeah, I think it's not a good sign. A lot of the pages, the tax receipts for the year, it's not included in there. A lot of the numbers in here that has those two months that we got zero one month and then next month we got, what, two thousand seven hundred dollars?
Yeah.
So. Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have unless you have any other questions.
Sales tax report, Brian.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, before I begin, I just want to point out, so I'm sure that everyone saw uh, the initial packet that you all received showed a report from S R I for May of twenty twenty. This morning at eight AM, we received the confidential reports from the state for June. Now, just to recap, June sales tax allocations reflects April sales taxpayer activities. And the biggest question on all of our clients' minds right now is what happened to us in the month of April? When we were in the thick of the pandemic, everything was shut down. And um, so I talked to Richard this morning and I provided him with um a copy of the June twenty twenty sales tax reports. Uh, because I didn't want for you all to have to wait another month to find out information that I had currently in front of me. So what I think would be best to make this easier for you all is I'll be reading from the June report because it does touch off a lot of information from May. But I've also got my May report here next to me and anything that is uh important for that individual month uh that, that ties in just for May, I'll report that to you all. But for the purposes of what you're looking at, if you have it in front of you, I'll be going over the June report if that's okay with you all. If not, I can do both. It's entirely, uh, I serve at your pleasure. You just let me know what you would like.
Oh, Jim.
Oh, dude, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So on the June report, I would be, I'm going to begin on page four. As you know, each month, we, we track the total taxpayer account that the state has allocated to the city. Um, for the month of March, which is the most recent allocation that we received from the state, five thousand one hundred and forty seven active taxpayer accounts are coded to you all. Again, as I mentioned each time, um, these are individuals that might have individ, e-commerce or home businesses or something in the sky that, that could come down and register for you all. It does not mean there is that many taxpayers each month that file. For the month of May, you'll see there was of twenty twenty, there was one thousand eight hundred and eleven sales tax filers. And recall, um, that would have reflected March. So that's right where we started um the shutdown and, and COVID nineteen. And that's, that was down from one thousand seven hundred and, excuse me, I'm sorry, that was down. Let me just look at the other report. One second. Okay. That one thousand eight hundred and eleven was down from two thousand and forty five in twenty nineteen. So that was an eleven point four percent decrease. Okay. Um, and so that's actually typical for what we saw for a lot of our clients. Uh, for the month of June, however, the city saw one thousand eight hundred and sixty seven taxpayers file sales taxes. And that is up four point one percent over twenty nineteen. Uh, we still show November of twenty nineteen as being the largest sales tax filers number in the history of the city. Uh, we do expect to exceed that number by year's end. However, um, we probably would have got close by now. Uh, but back in November and December of last year, we had no idea that what we were going to be facing come April um and May of twenty twenty. So your sales tax allocations be on page five through the month of June. For your calendar year, one million sixty six thousand forty five dollars and twenty two cents. And for your tax year, which begins in March, five hundred and thirty seven thousand four forty forty nine. And that five hundred and thirty seven thousand is a number that will actually show you what you have actually earned in the year twenty twenty so far.
Excuse me, that, that, those numbers do not have the March and April numbers I'm talking about earlier, right?
They do, yes. Yes, they do.
How much did you add? So there, there is a number, I mean, that we can see somewhere, right, that we actually got from the state?
So yes, and here's what I was thinking. Let, let me just touch on that real quick before I go forward. Um, I'm going to go back and make sure, I believe I did in the midst of all this, but if I did not, I'm going to provide Richard with a copy of the confidential report for the two months when you received both zero dollars and then the two thousand, what was it, two thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars? What those confidential reports are going to show him is that particular month, that particular business, and then what they filed. And at the very bottom of that report, because the way that these competence reports uh are broken out when I give them to him is we have the, the highest taxpayer at the top and the lowest taxpayer at the bottoms. And the one at the bottom are usually the negatives. It will show the reversal from H E B. And then the next month, when you had the two thousand seven hundred dollars, it will show all the taxpayers that filed. And then the remaining balance that was taken from H E B and then what was left. And that, that, that can actually serve as your official backup that yes, taxpayers did provide sales taxes to the city via the state. However, the state withdrew those funds as part of the repayment plan and then that can serve as your backup. So I will provide that to Richard in the morning.
I have a question. I, I, we had um on this list, I expected the uh, I expected the groceries, stores and restaurants to be, and then obviously supply some online shopping. And I only see two restaurants on here. Um, does, would we just, that there was, and there's quite a bit of construction companies? Are we, the construction was still going on?
Um, now let me just ask real quick for clarification. Are you looking at the top twenty five taxpayers for twelve months combined or the top twenty five for June?
Uh, you know what? Um, okay. Sorry, I was looking at the combined.
Okay. Now, the combined is a twelve month rolling. Um, and I do, let me just point out one more thing to you, um, everyone. On the top twenty five, twelve months combined, you'll see number twenty three, H E B. There is still twenty two thousand dollars and change that is outstanding uh that the city is still showing as being reflected, received from H E B. Um, that, that was reflected this morning when we got the confidential reports. We have filed with the state um, a request for more information on that. Uh, I'm, I'm not, I haven't spoken to Richard anymore about it now, but just let him know that that's still there. Once we receive an official response from the state, I will let him know. That way, um, he can be prepared and, and um, you know, you all can be prepared if the state is going to request those funds back for whatever reason. But that's why you'll see in the top twenty five, twelve months, H E B is listed as number twenty three. Now, on I'm sorry.
There's still an outstanding balance of twenty two thousand from the H E B.
That's correct. That, that, when you look at the, and, and he'll get the confidential, he will see this information, which you will see the lump sum that H E B contributed. Then you will see the negative where the state withdrew. Then you'll see a twenty two thousand dollar balance remaining. So um, it's, it's, we're going to get some clarification from the state as to why that's still there. And then uh, provide that information to Richard going forward. But that information was, request was sent about ten thirty this morning. So I'm thinking I should have something by week's end.
So what I'm asking is, so, so we, we legitimately still do owe that twenty two thousand dollars back or the state's made a mistake?
Saying that there's That is what I'm asking for, that's what I'm asking for clarification from the state. I, I cannot speak yes or no to that at this moment.
Uh, we don't know from our own numbers if that's accurate or not?
You know, I, I don't know if it was a, a reporting error or if it was the state didn't withdraw the right amounts. Or I, I'm, I'm just waiting to hear back to them to find out their actual clarification because when a, when a business files sales taxes, the state does some, some calculations in those sales taxes. And they will draw their filing fees, they will draw, you know, a number of things, they will add certain things, and they, they'll, they'll run about eight different line items on that dollar amount. And so our question to them is what does that twenty thousand dollars represent? And um, once, because that, that information is not provided to us. Uh, so once we get that, uh, we'll have more of a, of a clear answer for you all um and can move forward on that. Um, we just, I, I only know enough to make my answers dangerous right now. And so I'm just, I'm going to defer that to the state until um they can provide me some more information. Uh, if it's okay, I'll, I'll continue on on the June twenty twenty top twenty five taxpayers. Okay, okay. Um, for June, again, that being April, we do see there's a lot more um activity from uh e-commerce. We also see um that June, I want to, June is a non-quarterly filing month, so your Krogers is not going to show up on there. Brookshire Brothers is not going to show up on there because they file their sales taxes every quarter. So if, if you were thinking, you know, and rightfully so, uh, well, those places were packed. Why are they not represented? That's because this is not a month they represent on the, on the confidential reports from the state. They would have been represented back in May. So um, in two months, we will have their filings and we'll be able to see, I'm imagining it's going to be a big spike. Um, but that's when they will file those sales taxes.
Cable and phone franchise tax every month, right?
I'm sorry?
Cable and uh phone franchise tax comes in every month, right? Do you hear?
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. And you'll see those, those represented um on your top twenty five taxpayer reports. Where, where they qualify. I mean, again, we're talking, you know, your taxpayers are somewhere in the, in the range of like eighteen thousand lines in Excel, which is why we choose just the top twenty five. But yes, you are correct. Um, and going forward for June of twenty twenty, your top twenty five taxpayers remitted sixty two percent of your total refund. That's pretty normal for where you guys are. So that's not really indicative of um a negative shift. Um, and also what's, what's interesting is that for June, there were forty nine taxpayers that filed in excess of one thousand dollars, which is, that's a very healthy month for that business. That's a very healthy return. And again, that was in the month of April. And those forty nine businesses were seventy seven percent of your allocation, which is about average for where you are uh month over month. So looking just at your top twenty five, you guys skated through April pretty well. Um, if you'll turn the page to page seven, that's where you can see May and June side by side. You'll see in May, number one and number two, Krogers and Brookshire Brothers, because that's a quarterly filing month. So um, we provide those so that when you can see certain businesses that you don't see on your monthly reports, you're like, well, where do they go? That's where you can see your, your quarterly filers. On page eight.
I'm like, yeah, I'm like you, Sarah. I, I understand where some of these show up at, like the number one, hooker furniture.
People are buying furniture and having it delivered and ordering it from them directly. And it's actually great furniture.
And um, Jim's hardware is also indicative because um, anyone who drove by any kind of a, a hardware store during this whole thing, people decided that they were going to build that deck they always wanted because they've been stuck at home. And so um, places like that saw a big surge in revenue um during the shutdown. Uh, going forward on page eight, uh, one thing I mentioned when I, when I, when I speak to you all and we mentioned in our reports is we pay very close attention to e-commerce because it is where everything seems to be going now. And um, your city is much like many special purpose districts and clients that we have. Um, ninety six percent of your sales tax receipts are essentially in the cloud. Uh, e-commerce related. And, and to show that, there were one thousand eight hundred and four filings in the month of June that were e-commerce related. And um, the state provides us those particular accounts and what they remitted. And that is, that's not uncommon at all. I mean, we are seeing e-commerce uh overtake. I mean, Amazon marketplace is at, usually within the top ten of almost every client that we have.
And so I don't think that's, sorry, I don't think that's fair to say at all because you don't have Amazon on our top twenty five anywhere, not for May, not for June. Really, all you have is the actual numbers because the dominant portion of our revenue comes from our quarterly filers, which is grocery stores and fixed um utilities.
Correct. And, and also, uh, you know, Richard and I talked about this uh with the city being unique and in some certain ways with, we saw there was a surge in revenue from, I believe it was Hulu. And the question were, oh, no, I think it was Netflix. And the question was, you know, um, is this accurate? You know, are the taxpayers using, utilizing Netflix or Hulu as much as this report um defines? And so we did not see Amazon marketplace show up for you guys. We've seen Amazon marketplace show up for our, our like our emergency services districts that cover a very large territory, uh, like E S D two or E S D ten. Um, and so if I, I would be willing to bet that if I pulled your top fifty or one hundred, we would see Amazon marketplace show up in there.
Well, I would expect, especially since a lot of stores were shut down.
Um, yes.
All of our retail stores were at least. And uh, so that's where if anybody wanted to buy anything outside of groceries or even including
Right. I, I just do find it hard to believe that people are spending more at Chewy than they are at Amazon. But
Well, let me do this. When I, when I get into the office tomorrow, I will, I'll pull the full report and I'll do the, the cure, the search for Amazon and I'll find out where they fall in the list and I'll provide that to Richard as well.
Do they all report, do they report the same time as everyone? Do they all report, do they report the same time as everyone else?
They usually report monthly. But we, so we've seen, originally, we originally just saw a sales tax permit with an individual location number for Amazon. Then we saw Amazon Marketplace show up. Then we saw Amazon Marketplace LLC show up. And so, um, I just need to check for you all and go past your twenty-five and find out where they might be. I, I can guarantee you, you are receiving revenue for Amazon. Um, it just might not have fallen within the top twenty-five for the month of April.
Right. Well, make sure that we're getting all five or six, whatever the, um, the, you know, number of LLCs or whatever that they're currently operating under, that we're getting our allocations for all of them.
Absolutely. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll go back and, uh, it's, I, I think it sounds like I'm, I will be providing Richard with three different confidential reports, um, June being one of them as well. And we will, uh, look for that as well. I'll, I'll just unlock past the twenty-five and we'll see where they are, where they fall in the list.
Yeah, like I said, the restaurants are open here too. I'm not seeing very many restaurants up here. So, um, that would be helpful.
Okay. Not a problem. Not a problem at all. We'll, uh, we'll go through that tomorrow morning. Again, you know, this information came in and we, we just, we processed it and filed it right out and kind of kept in line with where we're, top twenty-five model. And so, uh, we'll expand upon that and find out a little bit more tomorrow morning. And Richard and I will have a conversation about that. Uh, if it's okay to go on, um, on page eight, since January first of nineteen ninety-five, twenty-nine million, three thirty-eight, eight oh seven in sales tax revenue received. And for the month of June, two hundred nineteen thousand, six fifteen ninety-eight. On page nine, your top twenty-five sales tax categories, we just like to look and see like who is paying what and, and what dollar amounts. That doesn't necessarily change month over month. On page ten, just to compare, June of twenty-twenty against June of twenty-nineteen. And again, those being dollars received and spent in the city in April, you were fourteen percent above June of twenty-nineteen. So that was kind of the big question that, that Richard and I were talking about was, you know, how, how bad is it going to be? And you guys actually were ahead of last year when things were normal. Um, and so, and that has all been verified by the state. Um, each month, currently you have a mean allocation of two hundred and thirteen thousand. So just currently, if you wanted, and, and, and that's actually down again, because you have to recall, we had that, that month with the zero dollar amount and the two thousand dollar amount.
Someone please mute your phone, give us some background. Thank you.
This is what I was talking about, where those two months messed up the data.
Well, now, they, they, yes, I, I will say this. If you'll see, our information goes back multiple years. And this is going to skew your graphs to the negative going forward. But, um, as mentioned, and, and I'm not going to pretend to be your bookkeeper here. But as mentioned, essentially these funds were earmarked and said, hey, let's set them aside. And then when the state came for them, they were handed back. And, and we discussed that back when the, the erroneous payment was received. But from a graphical standpoint, yes. Um, now we can, we can change the graphs to reflect, um, to reflect that payment had not been received and kind of, and, and reallocate everything accordingly. If you're concerned about seeing, you know, red. Uh, but this is just strictly using data that, that came into the city and dollars that came into the city. Uh, and yes, just looking at the numbers and at the graphs and the lines, I, I, I admit, yes, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna look ugly for a little while. That's, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I was surprised. Allow you to put, at least put the numbers maybe in a different color or something, showing that we actually not allocated that money and that money is actually what, uh, was paid to the city. We just got it at a different time. But it would have made the number meaningful.
If we're not just pulling it out, you know, and just have, like, create the whole separate category or just, it can't just be pulled out for the mix?
What could be done, if you want to see it, what could be done is the September five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar payment could have the HEB dollars attracted from it to reflect the real and honest payment of, of probably, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, let's just say. And then that dollar amount, because we had the confidential information, we can, we can, we can play with it. And we can find out what the actual sales taxes received for March twenty-twenty were. Put that amount in the zero and then find out what the remaining sales taxes received for April were. Put that in the two thousand seven hundred and twenty-four, and that can show you your real-time numbers as if HEB never existed.
I would be all for that.
I'm sorry.
So I would be all for that.
Okay. And, and that, 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 that's not a problem. The only thing that I would, I'm going to do is I'm going to wait to do that until I hear from the state regarding that twenty thousand dollars. Um, because I need to know if that needs to be placed in a particular month, if we need to hold that money aside because they're going to be coming for it. But that's not a problem at all.
Well, in regards to our own accounting, don't we already know if that twenty thousand dollars is legitimately owed or not?
Not until I hear back from the state. Uh, you, there's nothing that makes me believe that you are owed those funds, but I want to hear back from the state first before I tell you indefinitely.
Okay.
But that's not a problem at all, uh, ladies and gentlemen. We can absolutely do that. And, um, that way, going forward, it'll be a little cleaner. Uh, and if someone were to just pick up this graph and look, they wouldn't, you know, their heart wouldn't drop out of there. And they'd be like, why was zero dollars received? And so, um, yeah, that's not a problem at all.
What are, what's everyone else's thoughts on that? Would you prefer it that way?
You talking to me?
Yeah, sure.
Whatever you think is most informative.
Sure. I, I would definitely like it that way.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're quite agreeable there.
Yeah, when I look at these, uh, mean and, and medium numbers, yeah, they, they, they jumped out at me real quick, but they're, they're not right.
Yeah.
Yes, um, that, the zero and the two thousand seven hundred completely tanked your mean and median. And really, um, we like to use mean because that is one of the ways we can almost predict just very, you know, conservatively, what the rest of your year is going to look like. Um, but I would not say that your mean and median are an accurate portrayal of what the rest of the year is going to look like. However, we don't know what's coming month over month anymore. Um, but yeah, let's, 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 uh, let me, let me do that for you. We'll go ahead and adjust these graphs. And it will really only be three months that we'll have to adjust. And so that won't be a problem on our end at all. And that will clean everything up for you guys. And going forward, there will be a lot less red. And then we can adjust the mean and median to be more accurate of what, um, should be expected for twenty-twenty.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And so with that in mind, um, I will more than likely not necessarily dive too heavy into the graphs, because these graphs are fixing to be irrelevant.
Yeah.
Um, and so that, that said, we are going out. So we're, we're kind of working county by county with all of our clients. We're now in Montgomery County. Uh, we're spending a lot of time out in there, going through and seeing businesses, um, uh, going door to door, looking for signs basically saying that we're open, we're not open, we're going out of business. Um, we have, we, we have not seen so far in Montgomery County, um, a huge amount of big businesses that have closed. Uh, we're heading to the city. We're making our way to the city as well. But so far what we have seen is smaller operations. There's a couple of those that have closed. But overall, uh, many of our clients have, have fared in Montgomery County fairly well, uh, through this pandemic. It was, it was better than we actually expected. And so we'll be in the city, driving around and, and looking at the businesses and looking for anything that, that might be detrimental to your revenue stream. And if we find it, we will be reporting that to you all as well.
Great.
And, uh, that's all I have. I'll happy answer questions.
I was going to ask, as soon as, as soon as you hear back from the state in regards to that twenty K, Richard, would you be able to let us know sooner than later? What they say about that?
Definitely. After I get that information, I'll definitely relay it out to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Engineers report, Chris Wosnowski.
All right. Good evening. Uh, you should have a copy of our report. Uh, I don't remember ones regarding the Baja and O K projects. So that is, we're still working with the state to get those closed out and the final payments to everyone made, including reimbursement to the city. Uh, the work at the corner of Baja and O K, Mike was following up with the contractor this morning to see when they're going to start, but it should be any day now. Uh, they've been authorized, I think, now for a week and a half, two weeks or so. So, and they had given us a timeline of two weeks, so it should be any day. Uh, one I, I don't have on this report, but I wanted to just mention it is regarding Atkins Creek. Uh, we are still working with FEMA on the final documents to get the city reimbursed. And that reimbursement amount to the city is going to be in the neighborhood of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, coming back. So Mike sent me a, a final review document, it looks like earlier this afternoon. Hopefully getting that reimbursement, uh, soon.
That's not fun money though, right? That's money that we need to put into, uh, projects?
It, well, no, it's money that you've already paid out, so you're just reimbursing yourself.
Okay.
So it's already spent. So that's the ninety percent share of the total project cost. And so you've already spent it, so you're just reimbursing yourself for already paying.
Okay. Okay. So that will go into the general account, bank account?
Correct.
General fund bank account? Okay.
Correct. Downtown waterline replacement, uh, is bidding next week. So I'll have those bids at your July fourteenth meeting. Uh, water plant number three improvements, uh, we have received the water development board approval, and that is going to the paper on Thursday. So we would have bids at your August eleventh meeting for that project. Uh, just reminder on both of those, we have a handful of alternates in both, uh, with tank sizes and pump sizes and things of that. So once we get the bids in, we can reevaluate and see what's most advantageous, uh, to the city. Eighteen inch project, uh, that's on hold, just waiting on the new lift station for the testing to be done. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting earlier in the month, uh, last week, actually, with, uh, B V E, or the drainage analysis of Anders Branch. They are ongoing with that. Moving over to page two, uh, the top items regarding lift station number one replacement. We've seen a handful of pictures, uh, from last week from the site. Uh, they have a lot continuing now with mostly the electrical and mechanical work. As of today, they're still installing more electrical controls. And then eventually be switching over to a new power service once everything else is replaced. Uh, so as of the pass, it was in May twenty-fifth, which is passment amount of one fifty-nine, nine thirty-one. They were about seventy-five percent complete by value and a hundred and forty-four percent complete by time. So, uh, based on their current schedule, they still expect an early August completion. Uh, so hopefully having the plant start up somewhere, uh, around the end of July.
Should we be paying them at all, given the size of their liquidated damages?
The, the amount that we're holding on each pass is ten percent. And based on the projected of where they are versus where, uh, they're expected to end, there's sufficient balance between what's being held and retainage versus the liquidated damages amount. So right now, it's still in the positive.
But it shouldn't retainages cover things like that they don't do properly or that needs to be repaired? Or, I mean, I thought retainage was general, uh, good practice, not for people who are doubling the term of their completion.
Right. And that is, and I need to go back and look at this specific contract with it being Water Development Board. Typically, there is that option in there that the owner, i.e. the city, can elect to withhold payment, uh, due to substantial delays, which is what we're in at this point. Uh, we'll go back and review that contract and get with Richard and Dave. And then before the next passment submitted, have that conversation.
Right. Because I'd rather not, you know, I don't mind paying for things that we have, um, you know, like the actual equipment. But, um, you know, only retaining a standard amount when we know that we have a non-standard situation here doesn't seem like a good practice.
Right. So, you know, just very rough numbers. You, what, including passment number eight, you're at about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars paid to the contractor, which equates to eighty-two, five, uh, and retainage on that, with their remaining twenty-five percent. So, uh, look, again, let us look at the contract and just make sure that that's something that we can exercise and withhold additional, either hold additional retainage or withhold payment, um, until they get back on track, which they're not going to get back on track. But, um, let us look at that and I'll get with Richard and Dave later this week. And we'll.
Right. Because I'd like, right. I'd like the city to be protected if something that the standard retainage normally covers, um, happens. And then all of a sudden, we don't have, um, enough that back, back for both instances.
Right. Yeah. Let us take a look at that.
I agree.
Uh, moving down on that page, uh, plan reviews are listed. The heritage parking expansion was the covenant to you approved earlier tonight. So once those are approved, or excuse me, they have been approved, once they're recorded, we'll really release plan approval on that. Uh, the townhome project, we received revised plans last Thursday, so we're going through those. Uh, Autozone has submitted plans, so first time we're reviewing those, received those last week as well. Page three regarding plat reviews, uh, nothing really to note. Uh, the parking lot development plat, that'll be released once the same documents reported as we just mentioned. Uh, two additional ones were signed and approved and recorded this month. Then the last one to really hit is Atkins Creek, uh, text dot study and ten ninety-seven. So as of this morning, text dot is, we're relooking at the extents of their project. And so they asked us to provide an exhibit showing where we want, we would want the limits of the improvements to be, which we said is all the way to where the bulkhead was at one point in time. Uh, what was the creek versus what was the lake? Uh, so we'll, we'll see what they come back with, but, uh, that's, that's what we asked. And very last item on page four is we had another follow-up meeting with the town, Philip LeFevre, regarding Town Creek Crossing, uh, to talk about his development plans. And a couple of things we discussed were, was a handful of projects in the city C I P that are involved, uh, in and around this track, uh, which is closing a waterline loop, so between Plies Morgan, uh, Lone Star Parkway and Buffalo Springs. And so we came up with some alternatives and discussed them, including that in the scope of their project. Uh, so they're working through the feasibility of that in their design. And then also, uh, there's a possibility, which we're confirmed, they're getting survey shots to confirm that we might be able to extend a gravity sewer line and eliminate lift station number eight. Um, and so instead of going Buffalo Springs, flowing to lift station number eight, flowing back to lift station two, and then flowing back to lift station one, uh, it would go, lift station eight could be eliminated and go down to lift station ten. Uh, so it'd eliminate, uh, a lift station the city has to own and maintain. It does put more use on lift station ten, but it currently has the capacity, and the projected capacity based on what's there today. So it's not a for sure thing. We first need to make sure that all the elevations work. And then other things in our report are just the attachments of active maps and, uh, a copy of the passment.
Hey, Chris, I haven't seen Buffalo Springs Bridge. And where are we with that?
Oh, Mike had, when they had it repaired, uh, he had asked the county and the county went and repaired that pothole. And so once he got the bill from them, he was going to, we're going to break that piece out. So then we can determine how much fight we go back to the contractor with, uh, based on the cost of that repair.
Did we ever get a, um, a response back about that one-year warranty?
No, I, I, and I, I, I forgot about that. Once the repair started, I forgot to follow up. So let me make a note of that. And, uh, I'll call back over to you this week.
Given the issues we're already having.
Right.
And also was the county's repair like a durable repair or was it a patch repair?
My understanding is they did a full depth repair, so they dug down, they replaced the base, and then they rebuilt it all back to the top. Uh, so it's been, it's only been a month or so now, but so far so good.
I had a question for you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
On, uh, water plant number three improvement project, when you got it approved from the Texas Water Board, did they approve also the alternates that are being bid?
That's correct.
Okay. So you don't have to go back to them?
No, no, it approved the scope of the work and that included the alternates. And so we discussed that with them. So the alternates for, with or without the booster pump and the two different sizes of the hydro tanks.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I had a real lot of heartburn on, on getting a bid for that hydro tank. That's going to be probably obsolete or not meeting our minimum criteria for the T A B, uh, T A C probably next year. So we'll have a bid on both of them, right?
Correct.
I was going to ask if it is going to hurt the quality or the price of the bids if we go out with the one that we probably don't actually need and the one that we probably do need as the alternate?
I don't believe so, because the, the scope is so similar. It's changing out of a tank. So the foundation will be slightly different. Um, but I can double check and before it goes, it makes it to the paper on Thursday, uh, we could change that and make the, the fifteen, the larger one, the base, and then the alternate, the smaller one. And, and see.
I was going to say, it is a little confusing, because despite some of the more epic disagreements that the previous construction of council has had, we've consistently, over the years, agreed upon investing in the city's future and paying more for the capacity upgrades that saves the city money by investing now when you know that growth is coming and buying the capacity. And especially, like Randy said, if we know that we're going to be spending money now and then needing to spend twice as, you know, the same amount again next year, when the likelihood is that you could get double the capacity for less than double the money this year, I'm kind of confused as to why you guys would recommend that as your main option for it and the, the cost-effective option as your second option.
And, and the reason was that, was that the initial plan was that when the tanks that are existing at water plant two, which are the smallest, they wear out, that instead of replacing those in kind with the same sizes, that that's where the upsizing would go. And that was the kind of thought process going in, was that the upsized tanks would replace the older tanks at water plant two, when those needed to be replaced.
So is that the better way, I mean, is that the better way to go? I mean, it seems like from a maintenance standpoint, having one tank instead of three tanks is better, or two tanks instead of three tanks is better.
We, I mean, you want to have multiple tanks at each site, so you can still have one. If one's offline for maintenance, you have the other one.
Right.
And then, you know, as far as the question as, you know, from a long-term maintenance, luckily, these tanks, I mean, it's recoding, and you pay based on the size of the tank. So yes, there's economy of scale, that if you have to go in and recode a five thousand gallon tank, it's not dollar for dollar the same as a ten thousand gallon tank, but relatively probably, you know, minor differences in those long-term costs between those types of tanks. Because we're not talking massive differences.
Right, right, so again, the idea of having to, you know, invest in another one to put on there before the previous ones wear out, it's kind of, again, I'm, I, you know, we, we rely on you to work in our best long-term interest, and we've always tried to, again, put the best capacity down as far as we can see into the future. So we're not, you know, laying two four-inch pipes down year after year when we really should have just done one six-inch pipe and done with it. We have, you know, we've done that consistently over the last four, six years.
Right.
So this, this is, so if this is the best decision for us, that needs to be our primary bid.
Okay, let, let me, let me double check and see kind of what their thoughts are in whatever referring to our water group that bids the plants day in and day out, and on a, on the pricing aspect of it, and I'll discuss with them, and we'll make that change.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, having the fifteen hundred as the primary and the ten thousand as alternate. Thank you.
Sure thing. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
So if this is the end of the departmental report, then Sarah, I move to accept the departmental reports as presented.
It is permitted and seconded that we accept the departmental reports as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
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 Those say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. The next item of business on your agenda, item number four, consideration of possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending the zoning classification as defined in the standardary ordinances, chapter ninety-eight, zoning for an eight-point-one-four acre tract of land located at the intersection of Inthis Way and Scenic Hills Court as, and described as Hills of Town Creek, section four, from B Commercial to R-one single-family residential, and to amend the official zoning map, providing a savings clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date upon passage and publication.
And this is the actual action item to adopt the ordinance. You know, this is the request for the Hills of Town Creek, section four, the thirty lot addition to the existing hundred lots of Hills of Town Creek, sections one and two. This property is currently zoned B Commercial. The owner has applied to rezone the entire property for this R-one single-family residential. You know, planning and zoning and city council have both held hearings on this. No public comments were received. Staff and the city engineer have no objections to this request being granted, and the staff recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the ordinance.
I move that we adopt the ordinance for the proposed Hills of Town Creek, section four, to be rezoned from B Commercial to R-one single-family, as read by the mayor.
Second.
It is permitted and seconded that we accept the ordinance as read by the mayor as presented. It will amendable and requires a majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance as presented by the mayor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept the ordinance as presented by the mayor. Next item of business is number five, consideration of possible action to adopt an agreement by and between the city of Montgomery, Montgomery EDC, and Southern Rum Runners for the October seventeenth, twenty twenty Craft Beer Festival and authorize street closures.
The Montgomery Economic Development Corporation and the Southern Rum Runners have been working towards a craft beer festival. You know, they've agreed, agreed on the terms, including the attached contract, which the city attorney reviewed prior to the MEDC approval. The MEDC is advancing seven-eight-hundred dollars to SRR, or Southern Rum Runners, to be used to contract security personnel and for crowd control barricades. The Southern Rum Runners will contract and work with the City of Montgomery Police Department for the festival's security, crowd control, and patrol needs. The contract does allow for return of funds to the MEDC based on a formula written within the contract. And the formula is intended to raise money and awareness for Montgomery County Meals on Wheels and promote and attract new residents, businesses, and economic development to the city. You know, bring people into the area of the city where there are many businesses actually located. The street closures that will be needed are included in the exhibit to the contract. And the city, it was made, you know, recommendation by the city attorney, the city was made a party to the contract, because the city has sole authority to approve the street closures, that's something that the MEDC does not have. And the MEDC has approved this contract. And so we would be looking for the city to go ahead and approve the contract to being a party to it, and for the approval of the street closures that are in the attachment therein.
I was looking at the contract, Richard, there's nothing in there. Worst-case scenario, if the, uh, say that judge of Montgomery County shut everything down, there's, there's nothing in there, we get a refund on that?
Yeah, that really gets into a situation that is, you know, has some unknown there. And, you know, for the time being, you know, you know, we're, we're at a point right now, or if we're looking at things the way they currently are, I believe it would move forward. We don't, you know, it's hard to predict in a situation where we're in an unknown going forward. Obviously, if, if the situation starts to change as we get closer, you know, I think we would look at that differently as we move along. You know, I think it's a situation where we just have to kind of play it by ear, unfortunately, until we get a little closer.
But if I could add, I think Rob's on the phone, he can, he can comment, but the city funds or, or the MEDC funds, rather, are intended to be used for specific purposes that were, would be unlikely to happen if the event was canceled, as long as it was canceled early enough. But then also, I believe that Rob carries event cancellation insurance.
Correct, on both, both aspects. The event cancellation insurance is more along the lines of weather. It's really not a great insurance unless you get a monsoon, but to the question that he asked, yes, if we go forward and COVID-nineteen continues this, that money is specifically for two items, is what we intend to use it for, and that would be security at the festival and crowd control fencing at the festival as well.
So unlike previous events that the city has sponsored, you know, the, the partnership where the better the festival does, the more people come to Montgomery, the MEDC gets its money back. Sorry, somebody needs to put their phone on, hopefully not me. Um, anyway, so I think that that's a, a really unique thing that we're excited to make the, the MEDC's festival allocations go further, because that's one of the things that we had hoped to do by trying to encourage new partnerships with different groups and promoters and bring more events to the city, was to have the funds not just available for the same events that continued to be about the same and draw the same number of people, but have encouraged new events to come here to bring new people to the city and new economic activity to the city.
Hey, how many food trucks do you anticipate?
What was the question, Tom? I don't think that we understood.
To Rob, how many food trucks do you anticipate, and other vendors?
Jennifer, are you on here? Where did, where did we end up on this? Well, vendors.
I'm here. So for food trucks, we have ten to twelve. For other vendors, we have about twenty. For breweries, we have between twenty to twenty-five.
And are these commitments?
Yes.
Okay. And then what's, what percentage do you anticipate? Or the minimum that you anticipate providing to Meals on Wheels?
Rob.
Yeah, sorry.
You were asking, you were asking the percentage to Meals on Wheels.
So it's a, it's a dollar amount per each ticket sold to Meals on Wheels. The, what was the dollar amount on it, Jennifer? I don't have the contract in front of me, I apologize. I'm in my vehicle, I was at a meeting earlier. But, Richard, I think, do you have a copy of the contract as well? I think that's actually in the language of it.
Okay.
It didn't specify the dollar amount for Meals on Wheels. By the, the percentage to the EDC for Meals on Wheels. It was two dollars and fifty cents per ticket sold.
Okay, okay.
And then what about parking? Where is everybody supposed to park?
So we were working with Richard on securing the old Montgomery Elementary School, front and back of that. Keep in mind with festivals like this, if we estimate we're going to have twenty-five-hundred people there, we're not going to have twenty-five-hundred people there at once. It'll be out throughout the day, of course. So we do feel like that area can hold that, that amount. With the field.
Rob, or will they walk?
No, we have, uh, Meals on Wheels, we've been working with them. They have buses that they're going to use to transport back and forth. I'm sure we will have people walking, Tom. I mean, that, people will just park and walk, but we will have bus, buses, but also our handicap accessible buses.
Okay. Hey, on the map, what are the white dots? Is that egress, ingress? Or is it, is this one total barrier where you can't get out?
Let me look on there.
There's an entry, and there's what, two entries, is that right, or two entries and exit?
Well, we have.
Yes, there's two entry and exits, and the white dots you're talking about, those are just measurement points.
Where, where are the entries, by the community center?
Yes, one by the community center, close to Whitley, and then another one by the historical building.
No, those, those are the, those ticketing locations, entry, exit. We will also have breaks that, for the people that do have the wristbands on that can exit into the city and re-enter at that point if they already have a wristband.
Sounds like fun.
And this is an event that you guys had done before at a different location, so you've got a lot of the details, sorry, the logistics well in hand, it's, it's just working it out in Montgomery that'll be new.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be the new, I mean, it's one thing to say, yeah, we've done this before, we've done this three times, and then we've done other festivals as well, but obviously, this will be the first festival in downtown Montgomery that we've done, so we hope, you know, we hope to pull it off as smooth as possible. I'm sure there'll be quite a few things we learn pertaining to the fencing, ingress, egress, where do we put things the following year at the next festival? What makes it smoother, parking, as Tom brought up, is, is there a better way to do parking? You know, those are, those are my main questions right there with that. And signage, you know, the festivals that I've been to is where, you know, that's one of the big things, is where do you park? Where, just making clear and concise things where people that are coming down there, and especially if they're not from Montgomery. This is maybe their first time out there, making it as simple as possible for them to get around.
I'm sure the police chief will have a lot of thoughts on that as well.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Well, I've been making all the motions, so I don't know if I.
I was about to make a motion for it. There's other questions. I would like to move that we do approve Southern Rum Runners Craft Festival contract along with the MEDC, and also approve the street closures as outlined in the contract and as shown in Exhibit A. I'm running it funny, because my glasses are nicely scratched up now.
Did you finish your motion, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay, second.
It is permitted and seconded that we approve the Southern Rum Runners Craft Beer Festival for October seventeenth, twenty twenty, and authorize the, the street closures as in the, and the contract in Exhibit A. This motion's debatable, amendable, and. All those in favor of accepting the Southern Rum Runners event Craft Beer Festival and authorize the street closure as a part of the contract? Um, and, if you can say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the Southern Rum Runners Craft Beer Festival event, authorize the street.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Next item, number six, consideration of possible action to cast votes for the appointment of mayors of cities and towns of Montgomery County, nine-one-one Board of Managers' appointment for completion of term ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty, and the term October first, twenty twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
There, there are two distinct terms here, so, you know, your final motion would need to cover both of those for either one name or two names. The nominations that were previously reported from different cities to the nine-one-one Board of Managers, you know, for the completion of the term that had previously been held by Jack Yates, and that serves through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And then the subsequent full term for the same position from October one, twenty twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And the, you know, behind the name agenda sheet are the nominees that were provided to Montgomery County. the nominees that were provided to Montgomery County Emergency Communication Districts.
Graham, you've got a lot of friends in this county.
Or at least ones that last through September 30th. I move to nominate Richard Tramm for the open position of 911 Board of Managers for number one, the completion of the unexpired term ending September 30th, 2020, and two, the full term serving for the same position from October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2022.
Second.
It is moved and seconded that we accept the motion for Richard Tramm for the 911 Board of Managers appointment for one, completion of term ending September 30th, 2020, and two, the term October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2020 for the current open position. This motion is debatable, requires amendment vote. It is now open for discussion, council?
You are okay with that, right, Richard?
He's having a drink. I am. I, yeah, I have spoken with, you know, with people with them just to clarify that it was not going to be an onerous addition to my time. And then I do think it's a good item for the city to be plugged into.
Council, you ready for the question?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All those in favor of approving the nomination of Richard Tramm for the Montgomery County 911 Board of Managers appointment for one, completion of term ending September 30th, 2020, and two, the full term of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2022, which is currently in a position, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept Richard Tramm as a nomination for Montgomery County 911 Board of Managers appointment for one, completion of term ending September 20th, 2022, and two, second term, full term, October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2022, which is currently in open position. Next item of business on your agenda is item number seven, discussion regarding unattended donation boxes.
Okay, this is, this is an item staff wanted to bring to the city council for discussion and some direction. You know, we've received phone calls from businesses and landowners regarding unattended donation boxes in the city, and we've had to do some work with those areas to get them cleaned up at times. And to some people, those donation bins, bins become, you know, they seem to become a dumping ground and an eyesore. And it's an easy area for people to, you know, discard unwanted items. You know, as we've looked into it, some cities have permitting and regulations for the unattended, unattended donation boxes that include registration, number of units, removal of trash within a certain timeframe and items like that. Some cities have outright banned them, believing that they become sites for illegal dumping. And, you know, and they don't want to take on the work of contacting the donation box operators to alert them of trash around, around those items. Tracking issue resolution, you know, becomes an additional work and responsibility that they don't want to take on. What we wanted to do is we've, we kind of looked at both sides of this. We wanted to, you know, get the direction of council so we can move in the direction council would like us to take on. I do know in researching the matter, you know, David's looked at both items on this. And also because of his research, there is someone who's a, you know, guest on the line who would like to speak on behalf of the donation items. As I believe, I believe he is still online.
Hi. Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. So Green City has a, a one or two clothing recycle donation bins within the city of Montgomery. And, you know, we've been there for, since 2015. We have a total of two recycling bins. And we, we work with multi-homes as well as businesses to have bins with their permission on site. And we usually work with a lot of cities in getting permits in place. That way it holds everybody accountable. And we had multiple permits in the city of Humboldt, for example, in the Houston market, the city of Allen. And the whole permitting allows the city to kind of allow the proper operator to be on, on location as well as addressing the issue to, to have textiles de- water away from a landfill. I mean, you can see the data there that's about, you know, each, each household generates about two trash bags worth of clothing. The closest drop-off box donation site would be the Goodwill in Conroe. There isn't a closest place that, I'm assuming there are smaller churches or organizations that do collect them. But our bins is, it's available 24 hours. It gives access to people. And I can tell you just from data, the bins in, our bins in Montgomery produce a lot more than sometimes bins in spring. That's because it's accessible to people that don't have the access to take their bags or the clothes all the way down to Conroe. So a permitting process is what we would welcome and we'd be happy to work with the city to get that in place. Typically, it has an annual fee and operators are supposed to get permissions from owners, submit paperwork. And typically, we, we are supposed to, you know, clean up around the bins. So our service to Montgomery is two times a week. With, with a permitting in place, we usually increase that to three times a week. That way we know the area stays clean and everything is, we have taken, in the four or five years, we've been at, just close to Brookshire Brothers, at, they used to be called Survivalist Emporium, Scott and Yanceys. They, they allowed us to be there for quite a long time. And in last year, like, you know, because there wasn't a permitting process from the city, another operator showed up when Survivalist went out of, so they shut down. And when there are multiple operators on a site, it, it obviously creates competition when people dump trash. So we're, they just put their stuff on us and we put it on them. They think we put it on them. So it just goes back and forth. So when there's one operator with a permit from the city, the, the trash issue does not become a big, a big concern. And we can show data. You can, you know, talk to the city of Humboldt where we have multiple bins. And we've been there under permits for over three years now. We are actually one of the, just one of the few bins who operate within the city of Humboldt with permits. So we would like the city to consider a permitting rather than a complete ban. A complete ban would be detrimental in trying to, you know, divert a lot of this waste that typically ends up in landfills. So our company not only, you know, sources clothing, but we're also buying excess clothing that comes out of national stores like Goodwill, Salvation Army. What they don't sell in the store comes to us into Houston. And, you know, we make sure everything gets either repurposed or recycled into different products, insulation material, paddings, and industrial rags. So that's a little bit about what we're trying to do.
So what happens then, if you've had the bin that was by Brookshire Brothers and it, as of late, was a massive eyesore, where does all of that go? The, the beds that were dumped, the couch that was dumped, do you pick that?
Yeah, we have to pick that up as part of our host agreement to keeping the area around the bin clean.
Where are your other locations? You said you had two here. So there was one by Brookshire Brothers. Where's your other?
The other one's inside the Heritage Apartments, which is right behind this. And we have one in Walden. I'm not sure if that's the Montgomery zip code, but I'm assuming it's outside the city limits. And we, I have spoken with Walden's CIA before we, we had permission to be there. We've been there for almost five, six years.
So perceivally, if we didn't have one exactly in the city limits, there is a Walden location?
Inside Walden, yes, on Walden Boulevard.
It's not too far. Richard, what other organizations are here in town that take recyclables? Or if I was a citizen in Montgomery and wanted to donate some stuff, do we have a list of where I could go here? Goodwill obviously can't be the only donation spot.
We do not have a master list at City Hall, but if council desires, it might not be a bad idea for, you know, for us to just have that knowledge here or something that we could put out periodically as well.
I think the library has paper. And at one time, we had something at the old elementary, which turned into a big problem. We walked by there, you'd see mounds of trash because it's kind of isolated there.
Yep, in the back.
Personally, I prefer not to have donations boxes, unattended donation boxes like this, simply because it does quickly become a dumping ground, like you said. I've had experiences, you know, I've seen people looting the donation boxes as well, you know. Once someone drops off a bunch of stuff, I've seen people come behind them and open up their corridors and try to take half of it. I just, I would like to get more information on it from myself. I would prefer not to have them in downtown. I really wouldn't like to have them here. But I would like to know what all of our options are in regard to taking things for donations. So if we can get more information on that before we decide on this, that would help me.
Yeah, there, I don't believe that we're looking for a vote tonight. Is that correct? We're just direction and kind of open communication about it. So good, okay.
Who, who from the city would be responsible for just monitoring? Would it be Public Works? Would it be police or?
All of them, probably. I've been doing it quite a bit.
That's something we have to develop that we haven't, that we have to develop as a matter of policy. It'd probably, you know, be something that Public Works, the police, and code enforcement will have to keep their eye on. But we would have to decide internally what our procedure would be to fully move forward with enforcing.
Just to answer that, like, for example, the city of Humboldt, the code enforcement officer reaches out to me directly if he sees something left outside a box while he's doing his inspection.
Becky, I see you talking back. We can't hear you.
That's why. Um, I, what I think Sam is offering is a good compromise though, because, you know, if they commit to for sure coming by twice a week and if called, and there's a permitting process, which I don't think is about money, but more accountability where it's a contract between the organization and the city, where the organization commits to certain behaviors. And if they don't follow up on those behaviors, then they lose the privilege of having their box in the city. Then, you know, if, if they violate it, then they're gone. And, you know, it's their boxes removed and it's over. Whereas responsible organizations who don't interfere with the appearance of the city are allowed to continue. You know, I don't have a problem with that. And, you know, perhaps there are locations that are less visible that might also be a, an option, you know.
Yeah.
So I think, I think, you know, we, I, I wouldn't want to rule it out because again, I think that the, the source of the problem is the lack of pickup, not necessarily the box itself.
No, the box itself is fine, but when it's overflowing and there's other things, that's the eyesore. And then fortunately, we're such a small city that every, you, we're exposed, right? So it's not like there's, there's a whole lot of hiding places.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to rule it out. And again, if they, if they commit to coming by two or three times a week and, or two times a week, and if somebody calls because there's something outside, then.
So the permit requires, says three times a week, and there was two times a week without a permit, yet I know there was overflow for over a week. So how do we?
Well, I was going to say, is that theirs or is it somebody else's?
How do you, how do you?
Yeah. I think we start from scratch and say none are allowed until you have a permit. And, you know, the city is cleared until you have a permit.
And then you have two by side by side, and then you end up with the same issue that we had.
Nope, not allowed. Maybe that's in the, in the ordinance as well.
Yeah, as part of the permitting process, most cities only allow one operator per location.
So maybe it has to be like a half mile distance between them. So it's not even like, oh, I was across my property line, you know, like, you know, you've got kids on your bench seats and they're touching each other, even though they're separated by an invisible line. You know, not, none of that. They have to be separated by a physically, you know, impressive distance.
Sam, help me understand. I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
I'm sorry. Do we need two boxes in the city? I mean, I didn't even know there was one inside a heritage. But since there's one at Walden, I mean, would that just mean that we would need only one, one single footprint?
The, the one inside heritage is typically just for the residents there. It's not, it's not accessible to outside folks.
So then, okay. But that's still.
I never leave the city limit.
Still be in business or still be in operation?
Pardon me, ma'am?
That still be in open, in operation?
Uh.
Were you still creating that?
The heritage is, it's right next to, it's treated as a regular recycling can. Right? I mean, we, we wouldn't mind getting a permit there if we need to.
Hey, Sam, help me. This is Kevin. How, help me understand how, how exactly, you don't have to go through the entire business model, how everything operates there. It looks like, so you take donations, I don't even want to say really donations.
So we, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not a, we're not a charity. So I, I don't, I don't like using the term donation. It's more of recycling because at the end of the day, you know, we're just transparent in what we, we do. So we, we make money just, we treat it as any commodity. And, and used clothing, it's, it's a valuable commodity in, you know, certain parts of the world and also in industries that use textiles as raw material inside the USA. So, so we, we source this, we grade the clothing, and then, you know, we, 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 we make sure, hey, can this product be reused? If it's reused, you know, it's sold to somebody who wants to reuse it. And if it has rips or tears or stains, and we just use that for recycled material.
Yeah, I understand. So it's a business. I understand. It's not a charity. It's not anything like that. It's a business. I mean.
No, no.
You know, rather than throw it away. Yeah, I get it. Okay.
Richard, Lee? Hey, Sam, I've got a question. So what, what component of your clothing, how much of that goes into rags that are sold to janitor supplies and, and things of that nature? Is that the biggest item?
No. We, so out of 100%, usually 15, 15 to 25% is, you know, grade A clothing, which is, has tags on them. You know, it can be reused. And, and most of the products that are going to insulation padding, I would say it's between, again, 35 to 40%. And we have a wastage of between 5 to 6%, which is typically, you know, clothes that have mold and are wet, and it's not reusable.
Well, my like is, my concern, I think, things that my concern is just simply, you know, and when folks see these boxes like this, they, they go up to them and they donate. I'm sorry, I'm going to say donate because.
No, that's fine.
I took, I took three, three garbage bags myself that we moved in last year to that box and, and put it all in there. And I walked away with a really good feeling that was, that was helping somebody. And I'll be honest with you, I feel a little duped. You know, I, I appreciate it's a business, but I want to help people that are in need. And this isn't the kind of thing I'm looking for. I'm looking for something where someone's in need. So I'm just being honest.
And we, 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 we encourage people to donate first. And, you know, our, our boxes are clearly marked. They do not state we support a charity or we are a charity. It's, it clearly labels ourselves as a clothing recycle box. So, you know, we, we're not there for.
Saying it's a clothing recycle box, like me think as a normal person, no, so it's a charity. They're recycling it by giving it to people. I, I see you, Becky, I know. But normal folks see that and say clothing recycle. Oh, they're recycling it by giving it to other people. You know, that's, I'm just saying that's a folks.
Well, you know, we, we do, we do donate a percentage to various charities, but not totally, not a total charity. We're not a total charity.
No, sure. Like every business. I get it.
Yeah.
Richard, how many do we have in, in the city right now? Do you know? There's some of them we have, you said he has two of them, and we have other donation boxes, although his are not donation boxes, but.
Recycling boxes, we.
I mean, you know, I, I, just from this city, I've been, I have driven through Montgomery, and there's three or four operators. And, you know, being in this industry, I will of them are, are charities. They're all for-profit companies supporting a charity with a charity name on the box. So nobody's giving clothes away. Everybody's reselling them, and they just use the. Everybody's reselling them and they just use the, the, as a front to make people feel good about themselves, okay? But I, I can, I can show you data, every single bin that's there, they're all run by for-profit companies with ties to charities. But like, we're very transparent. We don't do that and we're just, we're, we're being truthful in what we do.
That's fair enough.
To answer the question I had a minute ago on how many, we don't have an exact count, but I believe there's somewhere between eight and 10 out there at several-
That would, that would be correct.
Oh. And, and until we actually started looking more closely at it, I didn't realize there were that many out there.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I think that there are a few that give the whole situation a bad name. And some people take it seriously and some people do not. And, you know, I'm, I'm indifferent truly to whether it's, you know, allegedly supporting a charity, truly being a charity or truly being a recycling business. I would prefer that if somebody's giving something away or throwing it away, it doesn't end up in the landfill. But I also don't want the city to be ugly. So, you know, this sort of goes back to the common sense clearly doesn't prevail. So if we have to add regulations to make it possible for this to run more efficiently, then I feel like that's what we have to do. And again, I would prefer that we not have people throw more stuff away.
Yeah, Audrey, it needs to be more, have more organizational guidelines to it. I would definitely think that the police department, Public Works would have a lot of input into it.
Well, I mean, I feel like, and this has always been this way in the city, you know, each, each worker has like a thousand eyes on them at any time, you know, and that's the same way it's going to be with these boxes. You know, the workers are pretty observant, but the residents are also going to be calling in the second that they see something that doesn't suit their sensibilities. So I think it will be policed fairly diligently if we do allow it to go forward. So, you know, since Sam has some experience on ways to make it work more effectively because he knows how human behavior works in terms of just naturally, you know, how, you know, keeping boxes apart makes it look better and makes the operators work better, then that's something we should do. But, and having the permitting seems like it makes sense. So we know who these things belong to, so we have a contact. And, you know, we can call, have an ordinance that says if we call you and you don't pick up in three days, your box is gone and your, or, you know, your, your permit's pulled and you're not going to be here anymore. And, you know, it gives us consequences for bad operators. And we can have what we, we can have, we can have it both ways.
So what are we looking to do here right now, Richard? Just, just work, we'll talk about this part? Yeah, we really just wanted to make sure we had an understanding of what council, you know, would want on this. And what I get from this discussion is, as staff, we should, will work on a proposed ordinance related to permitting and regulating these. That'll have to come back to council for future approval. So council will get a chance to review, have input. Ultimately, if council doesn't want to approve it, you can give us other direction after looking at that. So council will still ultimately have full authority on the decision here. So, but we will take that in the direction of doing some work, a little bit of research on what is out there in terms of a successful permitting system. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel, organize that in a way that will work here in Montgomery, both with our, the layout, the community we have at City Hall, and then bring that back in the near future for city council to consider. Sounds good to me.
Yeah, cleanliness and responsibility for your actions if you're an operator.
Right, right. Sam, if we did have an overflow, I mean, it's a Friday night or something, and someone decides to, to unload their, their old apartment on the box, you know, and if we, if we called, how, how soon can we have it taken care of?
We all operate seven days a week, so we have trucks on the, we have trucks on the road seven days a week.
Great, thank you, Sam.
No problem.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you so much.
The next item of business is the executive session, which we have nothing scheduled for this evening. And then is there any council inquiry?
So moved.
It is moving to second that we adjourn this meeting. This motion's debatable, amendable, or requires majority vote. Are you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will adjourn this meeting at 8:15 PM on the dot. Thank you very much, everyone, for attending.